Okay, I'm going to call this work session to order. We'll stand for allegiance. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Counselor Sanchez. Counselor Gorley. Counselor Trask.
Here.
Mayor Coleman.
Present.
Pro Tim Muller.
Present.
Counselor Thorson.
Here.
And Counselor Richards.
Present.
Okay, we have seven present and no absent. Moving on to the agenda, water sewer and stormwater rate presentation.
Thank you, and I am going to hand this over to our contracted director, Matt Brown. A quick just update on how we're planning on doing tonight is this one is the workshop. So Matt's going to be giving his presentation and then we're going to open it up to discussion. If anybody in the community has any comments, we do ask that they save them for the council meeting and give those comments during the public comment period. And then that's it. I'm going to hand it over to Matt.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'll pull up the first presentation for water. Sure. Oh, that sewer's fine, too. You can do that one. We're going to do all of them, so. Okay. All right. So at any time, if you have any questions, do not hesitate to interrupt me. I am happy to answer any questions. Greg is here as well to answer any capital improvement project questions. And then Kelsey can feel free to chime in whenever she'd like, so. See if the clicker works. All right. So we're going to quickly go over your sewer fund. This is one of the funds that we touched on a couple of meetings ago, but we thought it would be good to just kind of review, get you back into the pattern of what you saw. So your customer profile for your sewer customers, obviously, over 90% are residential customers and then a few commercial and no charge customers. Those are your, no charge customers are like your people that have just irrigation, your school district that just has irrigation. We don't charge them a sewer. Your rate structure over time, you could see a couple of big hikes in those areas. The first big hike is that 28% that was down, done in 2007. Then the 31% is that second big spike that was in 2014. What we're trying to avoid as we move forward into the future is to not have those large spikes and have a slow, steady increase that is predictable, manageable, and sustainable. Just to give you a dollar point reference for those spikes, that first spike, which was 28%, was $5.29. The second spike of 31% was an $8.70 increase on your residential customers for an average. Your current comparison right now with some of your neighboring cities, you are the second lowest in the area. So between Albany, Lebanon, Stateon, and Silverton, we also threw Portland in there just as a reference point. This is currently your sewer fund, and I'll quickly explain all the lines and the colors and everything. Red are expenses. Green is revenue. The blue bars are your ending fund balance or your beginning fund balance for the next fiscal year. The yellow line is your reserve policy. Your reserve policy currently states 90 days. So if anything were to happen, you have 90 days of cash on reserves to get you through. And reserves are really there not to make up for expenses that come up or anything, but it is there to allow you and give you time as a council and as a community and as a city to make decisions over the three months to get to a point where you need to be.
Matt, could I just ask?
Yeah.
Regarding those blue bars?
Yes.
They seem to be consistently above the green and red lines. Help me understand that.
So this is a layered graph from combination Excel, so it layers data on top of data. It does not mean that your yellow or your red and green lines perfectly intersect with the amounts of your blue bars. Your blue bars are what's left in your bank, so to speak, of your sewer fund that is after your revenue minus your expenses. So as you can see in the last four years, you can see that blue bar growing. It's growing because the green line is above the red line, and so that shows you saving money each year. This is what we're forecasting for the future. We have obviously your sewer project that is coming up, which I say that lightly, but it is a very large project and it requires financing. So we have looked at several funding options. You have three main funding options that you're going to be looking at and deciding on as you work towards those projects. And as you get started with them, you'll figure out what combination of those funds is going to work best. But what we've ideally put here is a best case scenario based on the best information that we have today. Okay? So we have a loan being taken out this year. Expending those loans over the next couple of years for the large project. So that's where you see that big spike of revenue coming in. That's where you see the big spike of expenses coming in. With the loan program that we have outlined right now in the rate study, it shows that you do not make payments on that loan for about five years after the major completion of the project. So where you see on the very far line is where that red line and green line kind of intersect, and that's where the tipping point is of where your expenses just start to get over where your revenue is. That's your first payment of your debt service. We try it as best we can over the next four or five years to moderately grow your rates so that you don't have to do a large spike in 2029 when that debt service becomes due. By doing the 2% every single year, it's a slow, moderate increase that we think is acceptable from the city's standpoint of what's sustainable. And so you won't have huge spikes like you had in the previous 10, 15 years. So for the sewer rates, three major, three major things that we always recommend. One is update your CIP every five years. When you have a lot of projects going on, best recommendation is every three to five years. When you have funds that you don't do a lot of CIP projects, you can stretch that out to seven or 10 years. And you'll see that later on when we talk about some of your other funds. Reviewing your forecast every single year. So that means your finance director, me, your city manager, Kelsey, your public works director, we're reviewing this every single year during the budget process. We are coming and showing the forecast to you anticipation. We can show you where we hoped to be at this time next year. We can show you where we actually are, and we should be able to continue those 2% increases over the next few years to be, to make the debt service sustainable and acceptable that your fund can afford it. So the recommendation for tonight that we have on the table in the resolution.
Oh, sorry. Was this, um, oh, you haven't gotten to the resolution yet. I was just wondering if that's an annual increase that you're recommending or?
It is an annual increase. Yep. So the increase that you're going to see on tonight's resolution is a 2% increase on your user fees that equates to roughly $1.21 for your average customer.
Now, Mayor, for how, for how long are you expecting to annually increase the rates?
That would be this year, so it would go into effect on the next billing cycle. And then next year, we would come to you at the same time with another resolution for increasing that 2%.
If I may add one thing, unless council decides that you wanted to implement an increase for a set period of time, like you could decide, let's do that since according to the graph, we need to have that through 2029 because that's when we're expecting substantial completion. We could go ahead and council could opt to have it done for each year for the next five years. So there's a lot of things that we can discuss right now, and then you can vote on them as we move forward. But that would be the 2% each year, and that would get us there, but in a much smaller increment than trying to do it all at once.
Until 2029?
It can be as the council decides.
Right, but to get us to where we need to go, it needs to be at least a 2% increase annually until 2029?
I would say at least until 2029, and we'd want to continue to monitor it each year.
Now, Mayor, if I might, I think the, the, the thing that the history was is that had we, had we not had this great big thing over and over and over, we probably wouldn't be in this situation now at this high level, if that's what we're going to call that, because it, we didn't raise rates for, forever. And that's why it cost us that $8 or whatever it was in that one time, and it was hurtful. It really was, but we couldn't even keep our business going. And also having these increases will give us the chance of getting grants. I'm, I'm part of it anyway, and that's, that's serious, so.
There are a couple of things, actually. We will not qualify for this loan that would allow us to not have to pay it back for five years without a rate increase because they need to show that we can pay it back. And right now, the way we are currently structured, we cannot show that. If we do do a rate increase, then we can show that, but us being able to be approved on that loan is contingent on us having the rate increase of some kind. And this rate increase would get us there. And Matt, would you mind going back to the city slide again? Because it was what, 121? Am I remembering that right for the rate comparison? So even with that increase, we're still going to be very comparable to Portland and substantially lower than all of the other cities. So I just want to keep that in mind, too, that even though we are looking at an increase, we are looking at the smallest increase possible in order to still support this project and to try to support our citizens. The council can absolutely decide to have a larger increase, and we're going to be looking at all of the rate comparisons tonight and all of the different rates so that you can make an informed decision.
May I ask one more? So again, the $1.21 recommendation for the next seven years is enough to satisfy the USDA and get us to where we need to go?
Based on the information we have now, we'll constantly need to continue to reevaluate. We believe that that will, that that will meet those requirements. Now, there are variables that we don't know, and that's one of the things that council needs to keep in mind, too, is that if we go out to bid for this project and it's substantially more than we're estimating, then we're going to need to take another look on how we're going to close that gap. If the project comes back lower than we're estimating or has different value engineering, then we can continue to evaluate over the next few years as well. So the unfortunate thing with finance and with anything that's in the market is nothing is quite guaranteed. However, the loans have told us that if we're moving forward in this way, that we've already been pre-approved, provided that this is approved by council.
One thing also that I'll mention in the forecasting models that we use, I use about a 0.5% in growth rate in the city. If you, as a city or a community, grow at a larger rate, that means more customers, which means your cost per, per household, you have a less burden. So that means you're 2% and for years from now, if you have a great growth rate, could potentially be one and a half, 1.7, 1.8, something like that. So that's something to keep in mind. One of those variables that Kelsey had mentioned. Any further questions on the sewer fund?
I'm confused by that statement. The 2% is based on the individual user's use, isn't it? Okay, so because you just said that more people that would come into the city, that that number could potentially go down.
You're spreading the, the cost of your operations over more, over more customers.
I understand that, but if we put this into motion and we have, say, for the next five years, subject to annual review at the 2%, the individual property owner or user, theirs won't go down, right? Unless we make a decision at that point.
If you make a decision at a later point to only increase, like if we come back three years from now and say, well, it looks like you only need a 1.7 because if your growth rate has been so much, you're bringing in more revenue that you can cover those expenses, so we don't need as much of a higher percentage increase on the rate.
Okay. Don't think that will happen, but you know.
It, it may not happen, but I want you to be aware of the variables because a forecast is only as good as the variables and the percentages that we use. And so that's why we review it every single year with you. Any forecast, even if it's four, five, 10 years, I will tell you, at least from my experience, a forecast is good for maybe three years, and that's if you have all the great data that you can and you have accurately forecasted your variables. Years four, five, six, 10, 15 are such a wild card that it's hard to even discuss. It's great to look at on paper, but in reality, it's not what's happening. So that's why we constantly review it every single year. You see five-year forecasts every year. Adam, do you want to open up the second presentation?
Little intro on this one, too, just to give you guys an idea of what's happened on the staff side between the last time you saw the presentation on the Stormwater Master Plan to where we are now. So since then, Public Works and I all met and Public Works had multiple meetings on working on identifying some of the key projects. And then Matt was looking at some of the key projects in order to keep our infrastructure potentially moving forward so that we don't end up in the same type of situation that we are currently with the water, with the wastewater treatment center with some of our other infrastructure. So this is doing a stormwater rate study, and I'll let Matt go into this in more detail on really looking at what needs to happen to start funding some of those projects. So I'll turn it over to Matt now, and then again, please feel free to jump in with your questions. We want to give you all three of these before we start looking at the rates altogether.
So your stormwater rate study. There we go. Your customer profile, inside customers, outside the city customers. Pretty obviously, your stormwater basis is mainly inside city customers. Also, you're that, to note that your stormwaters are based on how many EDUs you have. So estimated dwelling units, one resident house is one EDU. Apartment complexes have multiple duplexes have multiple because there's multiple dwelling units. So you note on the bottom there, I wrote that you have currently in our system 5,066 EDUs for just 3,400 actual customers. This is your rate profile going back to 2004. Your yellow or orange line is your inside customers, your blue line is your outside customers. You can see that, again, similar to your history in the sewer fund, you've had a lot of years where there have been no increases. So you started out in 2004, you had an increase in 2007, stayed flat until 2021, where you had another increase, and then stayed flat until our current date as of today. This is your rate comparison for an average customer using the same cities as your sewer fund. You can see that Sweet Home is the lowest out of the group by about $1.82 from Lebanon, Silverton, Stateon, Portland, and Albany. This is your status quo, everything remaining normal, not doing anything, just keeping the wheels going on the car. Okay? So again, red line, expenses, green line, revenue. Your blue bars are your ending fund balance. Your yellow line is your reserve policy of the 90 days. So you can see the blue bars constantly going down over the years. That is because your red line of expenses is above your revenue bringing in. So you're using your fund balance to balance every year. Note that I wrote, I did actually add the rates on the bottom there, so that is keeping the rate at $3 to what it is now.
So, Madam Mayor, may I ask, so you're saying in 2024, because of the projects that we want to do, it's going to take money that we don't have?
Not even moving forward with new projects, just keeping things functioning the way that they currently are.
If you were to decide to not do any CIP projects, your revenue, your expenses continue to rise. Personnel gets expenses, materials raises. That stuff goes up every single year, and if your revenue is staying the same, eventually it crosses, and that's what you see here. So to remain without doing any capital improvement projects, just to remain at a status quo, keep doing what you're doing, you can see the rate increases by year at the bottom that you would have to increase to just keep the car going. So you had your stormwater master plan. These are a list, and I don't anticipate to read through all of these projects, but they're prioritized into three categories, priority one, two, and three. When you're looking at a master plan, your priority one projects are typically your, you should be doing this, or they should have already been done. Those are the projects that you ideally would do within five years. Your priority two are your projects between year six and 10. Your priority three projects are either 11 plus or dependent on development. So the last time, just to give you some point of reference, the last time the city did a stormwater master plan was in 1980. Annual income was about 19 grand. An average house was about $47,000. I was not even a figment of imagination because I was born in 1982. If you were to do all of those capital projects that were outlined in the master plan, this is what your fund balance would look like. Obviously, we use up everything in your fund balance. We'd have to raise rates drastically from $3 to $15, and then 19, and then $20. Obviously, that's something we don't want to recommend as staff. It's not something you're going to see tonight as a recommendation. So that's when Greg and his team, Kelsey, chime in about what projects are most important that they see on a day-to-day basis that they say, we must, we must do these items. So that's where we come back to this list. So we took the master plan list, re-identified what projects were just must-have-to-dos in the next five years. And that's what you see in the top left there of the $555,000. And then we broke it up 10 years, 15 years, and 20-year projects. Using the new projects that were identified by the Public Works team, excuse me, this is what we forecast your fund to look like and the rates that we are recommending tonight. So you can see the $3 increase is increased $1 to $4. That remains for two years, and then it increases $1 more to $5, where it will remain until 2029 using this forecast. So similar recommendations that you saw with the sewer fund, because your stormwater capital improvement plan is there are less projects to do in a timeframe that is needed. That is why we're recommending that you update your master plan every 10 years. Just the same as your sewer plan, it's reviewing the rates and the forecast every single year to make sure things are on track and doing what we believe they're going to do. The recommendation in the resolution tonight is for a $1 increase from the three to the $4.
And if I could add one more thing, there are a couple of projects that you didn't see on there because staff has also identified them as potential grant projects. So there will probably be some other pieces that could be done as well, but they will be dependent on grant funding. So I just want to keep that in mind, that there's a lot of moving pieces here in order to keep all of this functioning. So those are the projects that we identified having to do with the rate increase and finding a sustainable, smaller rate increase that could still keep our city moving.
Just to maybe bring it down to a lower level there, projects that these, these projects, let's say they didn't get done. Are these projects that are like flooding city streets or flooding people's driveways? And generally, I don't want to get into every one of them, but are they, when it relates to stormwater, these projects that we want to do, what's the benefit in doing them?
So Greg, do you want to speak to that a little bit? Because I would say that the ones that we had on our five years are, and I'll just talk until he gets the microphone, are ones that Public Works, we had everybody involved. We had Dominic, we had Stephen, we had Trish. We all were talking this through, and these are the ones that keep coming back as high priority. So let me hand them back over to you. And then, but I also want to add that 18th or 18th, what I'm thinking of.
Say that again?
No, that's a different project. Never mind. I'll just hand it over to Greg right now.
So the question is, how are we going to be doing these projects?
The benefit that these projects, because I think sometimes people think projects, oh, the city just wants to do something that they just want to, you know, increase the rates for no reason. There's a benefit to our community. What's the benefit?
So the benefit is, is that we've got a system that isn't adequate, right? It's been constructed little bits at a time, which much to overall planning communities, right? And what it would look like installing a brand-new system. And so we get a few pipes here, and so a lot of these pipes have been identified through this process as being undersized. If we get certain 50-year rains, 100-year rain, or even a 500, God forbid that should happen. We had well over 100-year rain event back a couple of years ago that, that affected Quinns and some other areas. We made some improvements with that to open up and take more water into a manhole, and that was something that my staff did and which helped. And so by identifying these projects, example, the 53rd Avenue is one out in Foster where we've had not only some pooling, some other areas where we can't get water off the streets or out of somebody's yard. And so by adding that pipe or by adding, by culverts, this allows us to then take that water off people's properties and get it into our system. And that's where a lot of our, our problems are, is that we just can't get the water in the system and off of roads and out of here because we don't have enough piping. Some of these bigger projects are for upsizing lines and putting bigger lines in to support that. What I see here on 11th and 53rd are little areas where that need catch basins and things like that to support and just get water off people's property. And so those are the ones that we need to tackle first because there are immediate problems like what we had on 18th and Tamarack. So that's an exception.
Thank you so much.
You know other questions about storm? Okay, we will move on to water then. So one thing I want to keep in mind, and this is not only for, for council, but any community members that are listening, I want to make it clear that Public Works is a department that you rarely ever see the work that they do. And it's, can be very difficult for a community to get the word out about Public Works and the projects that they're doing because everything they do is underground. You never see it, you never think about it. You don't even think about it when you flush your toilet. So when we talk about water, everything is underground. So when we talk about water, everything is underground. Your customer base for waters is obviously mostly residential, eighty-four percent. And then you have some commercial apartments, bulk and no-charge customers. Your rate structure over the last few years is pretty consistent with your storm and your sewer, where you've had a few moderate increases, years of no increases, large hikes, and then large decreases. So in two thousand sixteen, you had a forty-eight percent increase, which was eight dollars and sixty-eight cents. In two thousand eighteen, that went down fourteen percent. And then it went down the following year, another thirteen percent. Currently, in a rate comparison to your average customers, I'm trying to keep along on my sheet here, you are the second highest in your water rate fees. I will say, even though I say you're second the highest, you're all pretty much in the same realm of cost. So everything remaining equal, status quo, continuing the car as usual, this is your current waterfront balance. You can see your revenue, your green line is above your red line of expenses. That's why you see the blue bars growing year after year after year because you have extra resources. From your water master plan, there was ten-point-six million dollars identified in projects that should be done over the next five years. And then you have twenty-year projects that are listed there as forty-seven million dollars. It's a lot of money and a lot of projects, especially over five years. If you were to go all in and say, as a council, we need to do all ten-point-six million dollars in the next five years, it must be done. To do that, you would need twenty percent rate increases every single year through twenty twenty-nine, just to be able to finance those projects. That's not the recommendation tonight. I wouldn't dare even be here in person if I was gonna recommend twenty percent each year over the next five years. So Public Works goes to work, Kelsey goes to work, your team comes together, figures out what projects you can identify that are the most important, just like you did with the Storm Fund. So we came back with four-point-five million dollars for the projects. And then a couple of grant fund projects that we're hoping to fund through grants later on. With those in mind, this is your forecast. It's a little lopsided and going up and down because you have some pretty big projects in the beginning. And then it tails off where the revenue or the, where the red line and your expenses drop off, and then it pumps back up. That's us doing a big project, not doing any project for the next year, saving up for year three when you're gonna do another big project and then kind of continuing on. But we use your available resources that you have. That's why you have a beginning fund balance every year. So you can use that for resources so you don't have to take out debt service to do projects, pay interest, pay more costs. That recommendation, what you see here, is three percent every year forecasted through twenty twenty-nine. Those rate increases are at the bottom. So you can see that in twenty twenty-four, it's roughly a two-dollar increase and then a dollar, two dollars, a dollar, two dollars, two dollars. So right around that one to three-dollar range over the next five years. So same recommendations. Because water has a lot of projects going on, similar to sewer, we recommend updating your capital improvement plan every five years. Your capital improvement plans can be paid for by your system development charges. It's not something that is charged to the Water Fund, Sewer Fund, or the Storm Fund. Reviewing the forecast every single year, the rate increase that you see in the resolution tonight is a three percent increase for next, for this year. You can make a decision, like Kelsey had mentioned, to change that resolution to do three percent every single year, and you can pass that tonight. What we're recommending, what's on the resolution tonight, is just a one-year, three percent. And then we come back to you with an updated forecast, updated numbers, actuals to see where we're at, and we take it year by year.
Madam Mayor, may I ask something? So is there an explanation of why Sweet Home is nearly the top of the rates for all comparables?
I have not dug into the other cities as to why their rates are, but I'm not sure if Greg or Kelsey wanted to chime in.
Would you mind going back to that slide too? Um, there's a few different variables. And they're also, it depends a little bit too on how they're structured as far as if they're looking at base rates or so forth. We have a higher base rate with a larger volume of water than some of the other cities as well. And one of the other things I think that you should know too, while you're looking at this, is most cities are doing rate comparisons and rate studies right now too. The type of challenges that we have going on in Sweet Home are not just happening in Sweet Home. And so Lebanon just recently had a rate increase. There are quite a few other cities that are going through these same types of rate comparisons. When I go to some of my city manager meetings, this is one of our biggest topics because this is a challenge in almost every single rural community in Oregon and in a lot of other states as well. So when you look at it too, while we are definitely higher, we are still lower than Lebanon and we're not that much different with the exception of Albany. But if you looked at Albany, their structure's different as well. Their stormwater is significantly higher than all of the rest of the cities. So each of, each city has been trying to figure out how to solve this as well. And when you have a larger city, like Matt was talking about earlier with the growth rate, there are more customers to share the burden and you can have a lower rate a lot more easily as well.
So I just asked that because my only concern is if we do this three percent over the course of the next couple of years, it's gonna appear as though we're gonna be the most expensive water in all of your guys' comparable. And so if there's not any sort of safeguard to help the people that are most impacted by this, it's gonna be really challenging. So I just, I don't, I don't know why it's so expensive and I'm concerned that it's gonna be the most expensive, so that's.
You'll see on the next chart graphs that we, the next presentation that we go through, where we put all of them together. So you can see the overall picture of a utility bill in comparison to each city. You'll see that you're actually the second lowest when you add everything together. And keep in mind that some cities on their utility bill have other things like transportation, light fees, park and rec fees, police service fees, library service fees. So all of that gets chugged onto the utility bill service that makes it higher. But you're gonna see that in the next presentation when we bring all three of these together and you can see an overall rate.
Thank you.
So how do we charge for certain things? Like we see like the tanker trucks that go hook up to a fire hydrant and spill up the water. How are we charging them compared to individual user?
So they play a bulk commodity rate, and I don't know off the top of my head what that is, where, you know, customers that go through a meter pay, you know, so much per cubic feet. And, and we meter that. Where a bulk customer will come in and either do load counts or if they act, actually have checked out a meter, then we would read that meter as well. But most of your bulk customers are coming in and giving us load counts. Like I took three thousand on this day, three thousand on this day, as an example.
Based on a honest program.
Exactly, yeah. And we don't have a lot of bulk users right now. We did at one point. We do have some people that live in the community that have wells that come and haul their own water, and we consider them bulk. But it's very minimal compared to like, you know, the no droughts or something like that.
See no drought, a lot.
Right, and you see them in Lebanon a lot more now. You don't see them out here.
Any other questions on water? Okay, we'll pull up the final presentation. All right, so we're gonna put all of them together. This is where everything lands currently. Currently, right now, the city of Sweet Home is the second lowest for a utility bill in the area. And then you have Portland on the far right. When we add in the three percent for sewer, the one-dollar increase for the storm and the three percent for water that we are recommending, that's your difference. Didn't change that much. You're still the second lowest. And this is not taking into consideration any rate increases that other cities may be working on at this time. This is why in recommendations you see a lot of, when your water rate consultant will come back and say, slow, moderate increases, two percent, three percent, one dollar. Those types of increases on an ongoing basis will continue to keep the city sustainable for the projects and capital improvements that you have planned. Doing nothing over the next year, two years, four years, five years will get you right back into having those large spikes of nine percent, twelve percent, twenty-five percent because you've put it off so long with capital improvement projects not getting any cheaper in the future. And so you're forced to have those huge increases to pay for projects that you haven't been able to save up for over time with those moderate increases. So you have the resolutions on for tonight that are three percent, the one dollar and the three percent, which are the staff recommendations.
In Lebanon, their base rate is almost seventy dollars. Do you use it or not?
What is our base rate?
It is twenty-some-odd dollars, I think, twenty-nine, twenty-nine ninety-nine, I think it is. I think, I remember that because it was odd to say twenty-nine ninety-nine. There are a lot of different ways that you can structure rates to be like Lebanon has, where you have a larger base rate. A lot of cities do that because it's more consistent in their revenue cycle. There are some cities that like the low base rate for senior citizens and customers that may not use a lot of water. They don't want to pay the seventy dollars. So you do the ten dollars or twenty dollars, and then you have a commodity rate for the usage. There are different structures for different types of cities. It's whatever your preference is as, as a city council of how you want to structure the rate. There are often cities that get into discussions about environmental issues and then they have conservation rates that you can save. If you don't use this much water, you can save this much. You can get into a crux there because you, at any city, you have operational standards that have to remain. So when you encourage conservation, revenue goes down, but your operating expenses continue to rise. So you end up having to raise rates further in the future because of those conservation efforts.
Personally, I appreciate the fact that we don't have anything else added to our utility bills other than utility costs. So thank you to council for only allowing those things to be there.
Any other questions overall? It's never a fun time to pass rates, I understand that. I would quest of you that consideration of you are not having to raise rates nine percent, twenty percent, and forty-eight percent as past councils.
I think some things you might want to consider as well as we're looking at all of that is just like Matt was saying, this is a way to sustainably, moderately increase rates that will not negatively or too negatively impact the majority of our community. Now, there are some options if we are concerned about those that are extremely low-income. And one of the things to think about is that we are getting some funding coming back to us in revenue having to do with this homeless funding. We could take a percentage of that, ten thousand, twenty thousand, whatever the council deemed appropriate. And that could be applied for as, for extremely low-income or either grants to fix any type of leaks or better, more efficient appliances or as a deduction for this increase for those particular people that it would be worth it to them that this amount is impactful. So there are many things that could be done if we are concerned about too many of our citizens. And there's also, if you all decide that you wanted to increase it more, that can be discussed. If you wanted to do a variation on what staff is recommending, that can also be discussed. One piece to please keep in mind is particularly with the wastewater treatment plans, we are at the crossroads where it is time to either fund it or just let these plans sit and have our wastewater treatment plants inevitably fail. And we are, we are at that point when we're, we're starting to already get those concerns from DEQ. So do please keep that in mind of at least looking at how, which projects are the most important to you all. And we're suggesting what we consider to be the bare minimum in order to keep our city still able to function and in order to have the type of utilities that can sustainably provide services to our community and continue to allow growth. And that also brings in more economic revenue in that our, the houses' property values are not decreasing because of failed utilities. So just want to leave that thought with you all. It is six seventeen. If you all want to go ahead and take a break, you can choose to do so.
I've got two things, maybe three I want to talk about. So Matt, is the plan that you, oh, you, you folks have put together, are we gonna have this number of increases every year? Are we gonna vote for that again every year? Are we gonna put that in there for, let's say, two or three years? Is that gonna be a solid thing or are we gonna have to go through this again?
If you wanted to vote to have this in place for the next two, three years, we could do so. We would still want to come back and review those rates with you, but it would already be in place that unless council requested a new agenda item to come back, that it would still move forward with this increase. That is not currently how they are written, but council can ask to do that during the council meeting.
Okay, and then another thing that bothers me the most is it's the grants that we may not be able to get if we don't do this. And it's, it's, I don't like the increases. I, I mean, I'm on a limited income too, but we, we have many options. And if we don't do this in a, in a, in a timeframe that will get us where we need to be, then guess what? We're gonna have another one of those shoots up in the air and back down. There's no other option. And I, I don't like these, I don't like raising them, nobody does, I don't think. But there just isn't anything else you can do. If we don't do that, we could be in trouble again. So that's just my point. So anyway, thank you.
Madam Mayor, may I say one more thing? It's just really important to me that we have some sort of safety net for the people that are most impacted, fixed income, seniors, people that are working families. And so I really hope that we can set something aside for folks like that. And, and I also want to say thank you for making it such small bites because it could be a lot more. And so I know you guys have worked really hard to try to make it as palatable and easy for our residents as possible, so. Is that it? Okay, I'll close this work session at six nineteen.